I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers and is open for the public attendance and participation. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Silman.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Brookman.
Here.
Commissioner Noor.
Here.
Commissioner Sandu.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Dale.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
All right, let's go to the pledge of allegiance. And Commissioner Noor, would you lead that for us? Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi. Everybody get comfortable. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments or controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be normally allowed five minutes to speak. Do we have any that were sent in? Any letters or?
No letters, not related to the agenda items. We have three letters that we've attached that are related.
Which we have. Okay, thank you. And do we have any comments from the public on any items that are not on the agenda? Okay. Alrighty. So, members of the public may address the planning commission on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdictions. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. We do have a clock and it will beep beep beep. And again, we don't have any comments from the floor.
What about traffic for this stuff?
When we get to that particular project. Is it something other than what's on the agenda?
No.
Okay, so you can address it at that time. All right, so at the agenda modifications, are there any modifications to the agenda? And if you do not have any, I'd like to move to for a vote to approve the agenda.
May I motion to approve the agenda?
Can I second that? Okay, we have a first, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Approval of minutes, minutes from the July 26, 2023. Commissioners, is there any interest in modifying those minutes?
No, but I'll make a motion we approve.
Okay, can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's get down to business. Consideration of Development Plan DP 2302, Merrymint Village Apartments located at 428 North Walton Avenue. And at this time, Deputy Development Service Director Doug Libby will give us a rundown.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. Nice to see you back. All right, so the first project before you is the Merrymint Village Apartments Development Plan 2302. So, the purpose of this item before you this evening is consideration of a recommendation to the City Council for the development plan for the project. It's located at 428 North Walton Avenue, about 7.7 acres in size. General planned medium-high-density residential, which is really our high-density. 12 to 36 units to the acre is allowed. Zoning is R3, that's our multiple-family residential with what's called an X29 overlay district. And that requires development at a minimum of 20 units to the acre for the site. Give you a little background, back in 2022, in May, State Housing and Community Development certified the city's updated housing element. And all cities and counties across the state were required to go through that. Fast forward to February of this year, and there was a community workshop held in these chambers to solicit community feedback on the proposed Merrymint project. There were approximately 20 individuals plus city staff in the Habitat for Humanity project team in attendance, and I also believe there were two council members who were present. Fast forward to March, Habitat presented the project to the City Council. Council directed staff to bring back the item for further consideration. In April, the City Council authorized the city manager to continue working with Habitat to apply for Home Key 3.0 funds through State HCD for Phase 1 of the Merrymint Village project. And in early May, the City Council voted to authorize the joint application with Habitat for Humanity, UBSUDDER, to apply for the Home Key 3.0 funding, authorize the mayor to submit a funding commitment letter for the city to contribute $1.7 million in development fee waivers and $155,000 annually for operations from permanent local housing allocation funds, provided that the city continues to receive those funds. Fast forward to May, mid-May of this year, the Home Key application was submitted to HCD. And the next day, the General Plan Amendment 2203 and Rezone 2204 were approved by the City Council as part of a larger rezone project to implement one of our new housing policies and our new housing element. And this parcel was included as part of that rezone project. You might remember that it was back in your March meeting where this item came before your commission. Okay, the project proposes 218 units, income-based affordable apartments. That's 28 dwelling units to the acre. Affordable housing funding options come from Home Key 3.0 and affordable housing and sustainable communities funding. The project includes five multifamily buildings. Two of the buildings, let's see here. Two of the buildings, three-story. We have a three-story building here, another three-story structure here, and then the larger, it's a four-story building up along Walton Avenue. There is a clubhouse with gym and a single-story facilities building. Phase 1 of the project will include Building 4, that's shown on the map, 79 units. All site improvements, including roadways, parking, curb gutter utilities, and trash enclosures, were part of Phase 1. Phase 2 will be the remaining buildings, landscaping and the community outdoor features, the pool and the included tot lot. Now, I noticed landscaping's there, so I don't want to leave the impression that there's no landscaping proposed in Phase 1, there is. In fact, we ensure that through a couple of the conditions. Condition's been added to clarify the timing of landscaping, Condition 6. And then in Condition 5, we require that as part of Phase 1, the six-foot-high masonry wall around the interior property lines, the north, east, and south property lines be constructed. Okay, general plan consistency. So, because we have a new housing element, and this site was included as part of an overall housing element, general plan amendment, and rezoning, this project is consistent with a lot of our general plan policies. And we try to lay some of these out there on this slide. Regarding compatibility, the site is surrounded by a mix of both single-family, two-family, and multiple-family, as well as commercial zones to the south. We don't see incompatibility with this proposed use. I will note that you might remember across the street, we have the West Walton subdivision here that got recently approved, and that has 66 half-plex lots that have been approved. And all city services are available to the property. Okay, as part of the design review, when you have taller structures, the zoning code builds in requirements that if you have a taller structure, you have to be set back a certain distance from adjoining single-family residential. And I won't read all that to you, but basically, it means that the four-story building that's proposed along Walton Avenue, it's there for a reason. It keeps it the furthest distance away from any adjoining single-family residential. In fact, when you look at the site, Building 4, the four-story structure, is here. But the setback from the adjoining residential from the nearest buildings is actually approximately 80 feet, so quite a distance. And all the buildings meet the height standards that are called out in the zoning code. Now, due to the high visibility of the project, the quality site and building design is very important. The primary view of the project is from West Walton Avenue. As you know, the site is currently vacant. The project will not have balconies proposed throughout the development, so we think it gives it a cleaner look. Buildings have been oriented towards the Walton Avenue, and a lot of the parking's located internally. From a design standpoint, we think it's better to look at a building and the architecture than a parking lot. Main entrances along, the main entrances are along North Walton Avenue. All access points are gated, they want to provide security to this facility, as well as the masonry wall on three sides. So, we have some of the elevation views for the various buildings. So, Building 1, there's two of those, and has approximately 37 feet tall. Building 2 is, here's the elevation for it, 38 feet tall. Building 3 is going to be three-story, 37 feet tall, includes the office and manager suite. And then Building 4 is 47 feet tall, and that's part of our Phase 1. And so, this shows the location of the clubhouse and gym, the facilities building, what they will look like. There's several potential color schemes laid out, which offer a variety of colors, textures, and accents, all elements of good design. When you have a multifamily project, there is often a open space requirement. Now, our requirement is 200 square feet of open space required per unit. And that's actually kind of high. If you look at, in the region, you're going to find square footages range from as low as around 100 square feet per unit to about 120. So, UBSUDDER is on the higher side, you look regionally. So, 43,600 square feet of open space, square feet of open spaces required, and they're providing almost 49,000 square feet. Now, this project is compliant with Senate Bill SB 743. A few years back, the state legislature changed how traffic is analyzed under California's environmental laws. And instead of looking at levels of service, it looks at what's called vehicle miles traveled. And so, this project is located in an area that has less than or equal to 50% of the regional VMT average. So, it's a really good location for this type of project. There are UBSUDDER transit bus stops near the project, and potential AHSC funding will require further coordination to provide multimodal transit options to this site. Now, when you propose an affordable housing project in California, you can get a waiver or a reduction in the parking requirement. So, UBSUDDER's parking standards, if you just open the zoning code and look at the cookbook, it'll tell you you need 281 spaces. However, under affordable housing law, they only actually need to provide one parking space per unit. Now, they've actually providing 243 spaces, so more than the minimum that's required. As I touched on, masonry wall will surround the north border, run along the north, east, and south property boundaries, and the facility will be gated because they want to control who comes in and out of their complex. So, staff did look at an environmental assessment for this project, and we were able to determine that it is statutorily exempt from environmental review pursuant to Assembly Bill 140, and that's actually reflected in Health and Safety Code Section 50675.1.4. And that Health and Safety Code section for affordable housing lays out a number of different requirements that a developer must comply with in order to qualify for that. This project meets, will meet all of those requirements, and so they are exempt from environmental review. Now, as with all of our discretionary projects, we must make findings, which is the rationale for approving a project. And so, you'll see these come right out of the zoning code, and there are responses to each of these in the proposed resolution that was included in your staff report. So, the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, make the necessary findings to adopt a resolution recommending the City Council adopt a resolution determining the project is statutorily exempt from environmental review, approve the development plan for Merrymint Village Apartments for 218-unit, income-based, affordable apartment complex on 7.7 acres at 428 North Walton. Now, we did receive this afternoon a letter, it actually qualifies for both of the applications being heard tonight. And so, Chair Silman, if you're okay, I'll just read this quickly into the record. This is from Colin Wade, ColinWade19@gmail.com. He says, hello, my name is Colin, I reside in the neighborhood where the Henson Farm Apartments are being proposed, and apartment complex would be great addition to the neighborhood and would improve affordability and property values in the area. I also read about the affordable housing complex proposed at 428 North Walton Avenue and think that is a wonderful idea, too. It's not often that we see projects like these get any legs in UBSUDDER City, and I hope other residents of the area support the idea as much as I do. I hope to hear about a resolution soon. Thank you, Colin Wade. I'm here to answer any questions. Ben is here to answer any questions for Public Works. And then we also have the Habitat for Humanity design team here also available to talk with you about their project. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, Commissioners, are there some questions for staff at this point? Nope? Nope, go ahead.
These units, how large will they be? Will they be one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or will some of them be large enough to handle larger families?
My recollection is they're mostly one- and two-bedroom, but I know the Habitat team can answer that question.
So, my question again is coming out on Walton only, going to the right, going to the left. I mean, I'm trying to picture it, I was looking at the design, so walk me through that.
So, Walton Avenue, at that location, you've got two lanes of traffic going each direction with a center median, center for traffic to pull out of. If you're turning left, or if you're going to head south, you would wait for clear traffic and pull out into the center lane, and then merge into the southbound traffic as safe.
Okay. Okay. All right, if there, nobody else? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment, and again, we have the three-minute clock, but you're more than welcome to get up and speak. I'm going to open that for public comment. Oh. Would you go back to the back and say your comments? Did you want to say?
I have a question.
Why don't we have you come right back for, we can get you on tape, for everybody in the world can hear us.
Notice I got in the mail, by the way, I'm Ted Chastain, 1101 L Margarita, right across from the Henson Farms project. And the letter I got says that's what we're discussing tonight now, Walton.
Oh, sir, I'm sorry to cut you off. We are, but it's down on the agenda, so we'll be there soon as we get done with this project. Okay, hold that thought. Thank you. Is there any questions for Habitat for Humanity that are here? Do you have any questions for, I assume it's Mr. Nicoletti? No?
No questions.
Go ahead. Nope. Do you want to say anything, Mr. Nicoletti? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, did you want to make a comment?
I would like to.
Go ahead and stand, go back. We're just going to play this by ear.
Good afternoon, my name is Bijan Parhisdar, resident of UBSUDDER City. With 400-some units, you're talking about a good increase in amount of traffic. That would be, and I thank you for pointing that out. Is there going to be a signalized intersection at the egress-ingress of this new location or this new development? And how many people are we talking about? And what will happen to the funding? Will the city get the funds, or the county will get the funds? And what amount of funding are we talking about? Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to, Doug, do you want to take that, or John, or whomever? Okay, Mr. Moody.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Does, maybe if you pull up the picture of the site, just to kind of clarify, just the ingress and ingress, it's basically a U shape, where you have an axis on the north and axis on the south. So, that slide, it's north is to the right, and so there's an entrance to the parcel. Maybe if we go back to the aerial slide, too, to give a little perspective. So, there we go. So, the property is substantial in length, is what the city fills, and basically, really at the basis of this, this is an affordable project, seniors, proposed for senior living, and that's why there's really a reduction in parking proposed also, because there's not, with that use, there's not a demand for the vehicles. But with that, at the same time, there is, we want to make sure there's safe ingress and egress. And so, Walton Road is fully built out to the general plan standard, that's as wide as we're going to make Walton Road. There's a signal to the north, there's a signal to the south. And so, I agree that if somebody comes out at peak hour traffic, they're going to have to wait, and then they're going to have to get into the middle lane, or they're going to have to decide to go right or go left. But there's not a separate signal intersection, we wouldn't want that as close as it is to Bridge Street in Franklin to break it up with another signal. And so, really, based on the level of traffic, it's built out to the general plan standard, and so, that's what the road's built to be, and if it backs up, they have to wait, and then they'll either turn right or, you know, wait for that opening to go into the middle turn lane.
Okay, what about, he had asked about the money.
The money, I didn't, so the units, it's 200 and something units.
218.
217 units. And so, there's really, on these type of projects, it takes a mixed formula to really make them happen, because for affordable project, there's just a multitude of funding to really make something happen. So, they're planning for state home key funding, they're looking for other, you know, just Amer, and then with that, there's also been a request for city funding that we have allocated for low-income housing to go into that mix of formula. And so, I don't know how to answer, there's not, there's not money coming to the city from this, really. It's property tax, my understanding is there's no property tax with it being affordable, depending on how it's, you know, put into a, you know, into a nonprofit status, you know, how it's managed later on. And there's no sales tax associated with it.
Can I ask?
Is there impact fees? Yes, there are impact fees collected with it. Yes, there are impact fees collected. There are water, sewer, and there are, there are impact fees being accounted for that are collected with various funding sources.
Okay.
Ben, does that include, what's the status of the school impact fees on this? Are those part of the project, or are they part of the 1.7 million?
The school is separate, and that's independent, my understanding, as they have coordinated with, Habitat could definitely answer to that.
Okay. And then my, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
Okay, so my other question is, I know that, and this is a big thing for everybody that lives in the city, the affordable housing. Are we at that point or close to the point where the state now says, okay, you've done your piece, you've done your part? Not that I would ever say yes or no, but where are we with that? Is that even fair to ask?
Oh, I mean, I would defer to Habitat with the numbers they do. But as far as the city is, we're underrepresented.
Still, okay.
So, we've designated enough land to be built out, if it was built out for the needs. But we haven't built an apartment complex in 20 years. There's been some low-income housing that was specific in the Richland Housing area, 40 units specifically for homeless or precariously housed people, folks. But as far as an affordable, there's just been some small, up on Pluma Street over the last couple of decades. And so, the Habitat could definitely speak to.
Thank you. Okay. We are ready, Mr. Nicoletti.
Thank you. Appreciate your service, Commissioners. We have a great project here, and it's not often that we see projects like this in our size communities. But as Ben was describing, how we can stitch together different pots of money in different ways to make the whole thing kind of take shape and make happen. Habitat will be, without question, subsidizing the rent levels to keep it below market rate renting. But we have a faith-based mission, and it needs to meet that. There's a couple of unique components that I really think you should know. Home Key 3, you know, addresses issues like relieving CEQA from being required, and it is trying specifically to put the cap on construction costs as much as possible. UBSUDDER City has participated the full way in making this possible. Those benefits are all realized by the tenants, and the cost of staying there will be reduced as a result of that. And that's really what the goal of Home Key 3 is. We today, in our list, have well over 1,000 residents in Southern County that are in a waiting list for a place to live, that come in and check in with us. And you have a really rapidly growing number of seniors. You know, five years ago, we maybe could find a senior apartment for 600 bucks a month. That's not today. And yet, Social Security has not moved. And so, we're really finding that that is an area that is pushing its way into this field in terms of priority and need of service. So, the other thing I really want to mention about this particular project is I think the approach has been just world-class. So, we started with Hilbers right about the same time that Joe Pope came on and took over. And one of the things that Hilbers created was a charrette process to design this building. And in that process, the city staff, Doug's team, was sitting in a room with a roomful of designers and architects. So, as they were making comments about city code that was being inserted, we invited the fire department. They came in with UBSUDDER City fire regs and specifics. That got put in. MHM had a hand in this, who will have a role as we get down to the actual development. So, what oftentimes takes months to circulate through a system, because locally, we tend to work together really well, we had this thing completely designed in four days. And it meets every major issue that needs to be concerned about, according to each of those departments that this will circulate through. So, what you see, what Doug showed you tonight, and we have some boards over here if you want to get a closer old-fashioned look, won't change much. It is already designed in for UBSUDDER City-specific regulations. So, I'm really proud of that. It was really smart, it was really money-saving, and really great people were involved in each level of that process, so.
And you also, I read you'll have a residential, like somebody there to help with the property, almost like an apartment manager.
This is a completely different game. We call these projects villages in our system because that's what we want to build. We want to build community. And Habitat has always wanted to build community and build hope. And the way we're doing that is through a major investment we made into the CAL AIM system. So, CAL AIM, if you are not familiar, is like medical billing, and so it's Medicaul, but it's next level. It sees housing as pharmacy, people are healthier when they're housed. It sees better living, better eating, better exercise, better life. And so, we have now a full team of housing navigators and caseworkers. We work very closely with behavioral health, with county health and human services. We intermix every week, we meet weekly today, so that's not going to change. So that's not going to change. But what a resident in this project will receive is free childcare. They'll receive projects to help seniors live healthier and feel better, more preventative stuff, ways to not end up in the hospital for lifestyle, you know? And we'll have cooking classes and there'll be just really fun community activities that are really kind of probably feels a lot like Blue Zone approach. It's just really about a healthier life and we're excited about it. We think that as we're doing this today in Harmony Village in South Center, and we're seeing tremendous successes. People are really restoring their lives and really taking advantage of the affordable pricing. And so, yeah, it is permanent housing, but it comes with supportive services.
Okay.
That's a big difference.
Thank you, that's where I was trying to get to, supportive services, okay. All right. And anybody else want, we're good. All right, so I'm going to close the public comment because nobody can. And I'm going to take it back to the comments from the commissioners. Anything else before we, any, any comments or, okay, well, so let's finish this up and conduct a vote. And who would like to make the motion? I'm throwing it at you.
I make the motion that we adopt a resolution recommending the city council of the city of Uba City adopt a resolution to determine that the project is statutorily exempt from environmental review pursuant to Assembly Bill 140 as reflected in Health and Safety Code Section 50675.1.4 and approved development plan 23-02 Merriman Village Apartments, subject to the conditions of approval for the development of a 218 unit income-based affordable apartment complex located on 7.7 acre parcel at 428 North Walton Avenue. Accessory's parcel number 58-120-001.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Nor?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandu?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bruceon Brookman?
Yes.
Chair Bruceon Selman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Congratulations.
Okay. We're going to move on to, we're number six, right? Consideration of a General Plan Amendment GPA 2301, Rezone RZ 2302, or one, and Develop Plan DP 2301, Henson Farms Apartments located at the north side of North Colusa Frendage Road between Hooper Road and El Margarita Road. And again, Service Director Doug Libby will give us a presentation. And thank you very much, Merriman, and good job. There are some seats up front if you want to, don't want to have to stand. I just want to make sure you see it.
Well, I guess we know which project everyone's here for, right? So thank you for everyone for taking your time out to be here tonight. Okay, so the main event. So we're talking about general plan amendment, rezone, and a development plan for Henson Farm Apartments. So once again, you're going to consider a resolution to make a recommendation to the city council. So want to be clear for the public, any action taken tonight is not a final decision. It would have to continue on to the city council. So it's only a recommendation regarding the environmental assessment, the general plan amendment, the rezoning, and the development plan. I think everyone knows where the project site is located, 7.84 acres on the north side of North Colusa Frendage Road between Hooper on the west, El Margarita on the east. Property is actually general planned office and office park today. And the applicants are proposing to change that to a medium-high density residential, 12 to 36 dwelling units for the acre. Change the zoning to R3. The project proposes 138 apartment, market rate apartment complex. So what we mean by market rate is the last project on your, on your agenda was going to be a rent subsidized type housing. And that's not what this is. This is a market rate type housing, so whatever the market will bear for the pricing of those units. Eleven residential buildings are proposed. Seven of the type building A are a combination two, three story, and I'll go into a little bit more in a moment. The rest of the buildings are two-story. It does have a community building, mailroom, swimming pool, and an outdoor patio. Now, the last, we had to go back and I think Ben touched on it, the last public hearing item was that the last time we did a similar sized market rate apartment complex in Uba City was the River Oaks Apartments at 700 Bog Road. I had to go back on the air photos to find out when was that being constructed? And it was actually in 2004, when you could see the air photo when it was under construction. And that, that project was 148 units, two-story, one and two bedroom units. Current rental rates are between 1500 and 1850 and no vacancies. And so when I saw that, I started thinking about some of the news I was hearing this, this week also regarding housing. And everyone knows real estate's local, but just from a national level, you have mortgage rates hit the highest level since 2000. So what's 7.48% for a 30-year fixed rate? The inventory of homes nationwide is at a historic low, continues to be. And so when you have the historic low of inventory, the prices remain high, plus you have high interest rates. It has an effect of pricing out a lot of people from the housing market. They just can't afford to buy single-family homes. I remember back when I bought my first home in Uba City, I was afraid that was going to happen. And so the project that's proposed tonight is to, in part, address some of that, that situation for our local area. Okay, a little bit of background. This site was a part of a tentative subdivision map back in 2021, Henson Ranch. Divided 25 acres into 96 single-family residential lots, which also included this project site. Again, state certified our housing element in May of last year. In December of last year, those of you who were on the commission at that time would remember, we brought forward a similar project as tonight. It was the same general plan amendment, the same rezoning, but it didn't include the development plan component. And so the planning commission was uncomfortable with that project at the time because they felt there was a lot of uncertainty on what type of project would actually get developed on this site. And so the planning commission's recommendation back last December was for denial. And so the applicants took that to heart. They withdrew last year's application and then submitted the development plan with new general plan amendment and rezoning, which is why we're here tonight. And it has the, all the detail in it that the other application was missing. Okay, general plan consistency. Our housing element talks about facilitating a variety of housing types. You know, Uba City predominantly is a single-family residential neighborhoods. We do have some multifamily. As we noted, it's been, you know, 20 years since we've had a market rate apartment complex project built. And so, you know, we do feel that this project does meet that requirement. Housing HC7 talks about regional housing needs and the city playing its part. We feel the project does do that. One of the questions we always get is community benefit. How does this project benefit the community? Well, it benefits the community because it addresses housing types for all members of the community, not just one particular housing type. It does, you have a vacant site today, was a formal processing facility, which had been unused for a number of years. And so some could say that, well, development will minimize blight of the vacant parcels. In the planning world, you hear a term a lot these days called missing middle housing. It's for middle-income folks. And it's also called workforce housing. And there's not a lot of it. And that's where you find a lot of the shortfall in housing, people being able to find a decent place to live. And so a project like this does, we feel, fall into the middle, missing middle housing. We do think it aligns with the current city priorities and goals by providing housing options. We recently completed a zoning code audit, which looked at barriers to housing and some of the things we can do to encourage housing, and not just single-family, but a range of housing types. We think this project falls into some of the things that they mentioned in that zoning code audit. And as far as our current goals and priorities on our housing element, we think it's consistent with that. Okay, compatibility with neighboring uses. There, because this is located in Tierra Buena with a mix of residential use types, you have predominantly a single-family residential. You have the new single-family residential from Henson Ranch. And this one was actually a surprise to me. To the northeast of the project site, right here, there's actually, very limited. So I'm not comparing them as equal in any way, but there actually was some small apartments located right there. Again, this project has a density of 17 units per acre. Now, design review. Now, as part of, when we're looking, obviously, this, this project has a lot of visibility to the city along the highway in that location. And so we did touch bases with the designers and wanted to find out what were some of their thoughts when they were designing this project. And so they gave us a few slides and they gave us a few comments to that and to that regard. And so the designers looked at Uba City, this first slide here, as a city of history, agriculture, integrity, and exciting future. The designers looked at the existing housing stock in Uba City, architectural forms, materials, and varied roof lines. The designers looked at agriculture architecturally and looked to develop an approachable, pedestrian-friendly, and relatable housing development. And the designers looked at reclaiming existing agricultural elements for reuse as design features within the landscape, which really is an acknowledgement or a nod to the agricultural history of that property. So these are a couple of pictures of what the site looks like today. And so with the, kind of the magic of technology today, you can kind of superimpose some of the elevations on there and you can kind of get kind of a glimpse of what it might look like. You can see the street frendage, what the street frendage would look like with the trees, the buildings. And then you get an idea with the elevation superimposed on the site. You know, buildings again, fronting the Frendage Road, it's always nicer to see building and landscaping versus parking lot. Main entrance is on the Frendage Road. Access points are gated, masonry wall on the north side of the project with decorative fencing around the remaining perimeter. There will have be an entrance feature installed using the historic materials, equipment from the old Henson Farm Orchards. The current concept is a show a water tower type feature, which you can see. Okay, we have a number of building types proposed. And the next several slides, I really like them because it shows a lot of different things here. So there, we heard a lot of comments leading up to this hearing as far as the height of the, of the project. There was a lot of talk about, well, there's a lot of three, I've even heard four-story projects, buildings are proposed. And there are portions of seven buildings, which are three-story. They all front the Frendage Road. So these buildings here that are highlighted in purple, you can see the diagonal hatched area. That's the portion of each building that fronts the Frendage Road that is going to be three stories. Now, if you look in the middle of here, the elevation view, this shows that portion of the building that fronts down here, which is three stories in height. The other thing I like about this, this slide that we put together is that it shows the proposed building height. And it shows what the, what the zone district height limit in orange is. So the zone district, if you go to R3, has a 48-foot height limit. And so you can see that the building is quite a bit less and definitely less than the 52-foot height that the current office designated land provides for. Building B, there's two of those shown in the blue highlighted area. And again, those are, well, those are two-story. And you can see the relationship of the proposed height with regard to the, kind of the maximum height that the zoning allows for. And building C, again, two of those highlighted in purple, 48 feet maximum zone height. You can see significantly less than the zoning maximum. The community building is going to be single-story, about 20 feet tall. And just to the north of that is the pool and patio. And as I think I touched on, you've got the community lounge, mail, parcel room, storage utilities, all located there. Now, this site, the design of this site has solid wood slatted design for the balconies. You've got the roofing being pitched corrugated metal. Stairways are either recessed or interior. The siding includes a variety of textures and types of metal, wood, and stucco, all good elements of design. The, the elements they're incorporating, the one thing I've heard of, and it's definitely, it's a valid concern raised by the community is they're like, well, is this, is this going to be, is this going to be affordable housing projects? Is this going to be a low-income housing? What kind of people are going to be moving in next to me? That's a valid concern. You know, the, the materials and the, the efforts that they're putting in here lend itself to market rate units. Because if they put that investment into the project, they're going to have to have market rate units in order to basically pay for the project. They're also on the lower end. So if you really wanted to maximize the site, remember, most general plan designation allows for 36 units per the acre. They're on the lower end of that, 17. This project, unlike others, has also some high infrastructure costs. They've got three road frendages they need to improve. And that adds a lot of cost to the, to the project. Similar to the last project, we have the requirement of open space. And this project meets that requirement. 27,000 square feet minimum required, and they're proposing 31,700 square feet. So it complies with the municipal code requirement. One of the things we also looked at is, well, this, this project, how does it fit in in relationship to the nearby single-family dwellings, the closest ones? We looked at, well, building the apartment here, how far away is it going to be from the nearest single-family home? And also on the, on the east side. And we found out that it's going to be at least, there's going to be 100 foot, approximately 100 feet between, between the existing homes and the nearest apartment. Landscaping, one of the design elements I would, I'm really happy to see for, for this project is along the Frendage Road. And, well, actually, all the road frendages, they have a double row of trees. And that's going to, when those trees grow, and not just both screening, but just the aesthetic of what it's going to look like there, it's going to have a really nice look. I think the residents would be very happy to, to live there because of that. All landscaping that's, that's proposed, either it meets our shading requirement, it complies with our design standards. Exterior lighting is decorative, includes the parking lot lighting, the wall mount lighting, and walkway light posts. As we touched on, along the, there's a masonry wall along the, proposed along the northern property line, decorative fencing around the perimeter. Garbage enclosures are interior located and enclosed. Traffic. They have a main entrance off of Colusa Avenue. There's secondary entrances off of El Margarita and Hooper. That's done by design. That's done by design. The reason being is because we wanted to kind of lessen the impact to the side streets. So, you have the main entrance into the complex. Developer will be required to improve the adjacent street sections to city standards for the length of the property on all three sides. Now, we did have a traffic study prepared by Flecker and Associates. It determined that each unit would generate about 6.74 vehicle trips per day. I think that some of the key figures are that in the, they look at AM and PM peak hour traffic, and that's typically, as we said here on the slide, 7:00 to 9:00 AM or 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And so, the project would result in 55 AM peak hour trips or 70 PM peak hour trips. Now, when you have more housing, you're going to have more traffic. No one's not saying otherwise. Traffic in all directions currently operates at the acceptable levels of service standard as adopted by the city. And as a result of the traffic study, it showed that it would continue to operate at those same levels of service. Now, it did show that in the traffic study, there would be small increases to the cumulative queuing on westbound North Colusa Frontage Road up to two seconds. There is, without a doubt, there's a longer-term issue with the intersection of Highway 20 and George Washington. That's going to involve partnering with Caltrans and coming up with a larger solution. But the project is not going to decrease the level of service at the Colusa Frontage We thought we'd also bring up the development to the east. You'll remember at your last meeting, we had the, within the Harder specific plan, we had the Harder Marketplace. And so, that project, we're all familiar with, the way the road has historically looked, that roadway is going to be improved, will be a roundabout, and then we straightened into tie into the frontage road. So, we thought it was important to at least reference that improvement which is occurring right now. Now, part of the traffic analysis we thought would be interesting to look at is that, well, you know, remember, because this site is general planned for office, well, what would it look like if it was built out of office? What would be that traffic impact you'd see with office versus the traffic impact you see with residential? And what you find is that the traffic engineer came back and told us that, well, if you build out an office as specified under your, under the limits specified on your general plan, you'd actually generate more traffic under the office versus residential. You'd have more total daily trips and increased peak hour trips. Parking. Parking is, they're required to put in 193 spaces. They're proposing 223. Additionally, when they make the road improvements along the frontage road, that would actually provide room, not that it's needed or required, but would provide, accommodate additional parking along the project frontage.
All right. Come on, everybody, let's get through this.
So, the project is required to comply with all ADA standards and electric vehicle parking requirements as reflected in the new building code that took effect January of this year. Another question we always hear is, well, this project's impact on schools. We did get a letter from the school district saying that they can accommodate the project, both from Tierra Buena Elementary as well as River Valley High School. Also, keep in mind that as part of developing a project like this, the developer is going to be required to pay school impact fees that the school district has adopted. And, yeah, they will, they're definitely going to be significant. The school district will collect a lot of money because of a project like this. So, one of the things we hear is that, well, the project we're being shown today, is that the project we're actually going to get? And we've included conditions to try to address that. And basically, you know, they have to build the site consistent with the, what will be the approved site plan. They need to comply with the environmental mitigation measures that were, are being proposed. And if the developer proposes to construct something different than what's presented today, they actually have to come back through the process for consideration. So, there are some guardrails put on there. Noise, as expected, a project like this would need to do a noise study. They did. There's going to need to be, there's a condition added requiring a masonry-type wall in the sections indicated in purple along the frontage road, and you're going to have to have increased construction requirements for the lower-level units facing the highway. And that's really not unusual. If you go down into, if you go down to Elk Grove, you go into Sacramento, you'll see multifamily. Actually, near where 99 and 5 come together, they actually built housing there with no sound wall. Don't ask me how they did that. But this project, they're going to have to put in the noise attenuation, and they're going to, they can accomplish some of the increased construction with some better windows, you could have increased insulation, increased wall thickness, that type of thing. Okay, so, this project is subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, and we did prepare an environmental assessment for the project. There were mitigation measures laid out for a variety of topics, traffic, noise, greenhouse gas emissions, and cultural resources. With incorporating the mitigation measures in the project, staff believes the project will have a less-than-significant impact on the environment and is recommending a mitigated negative declaration. Now, we did receive a letter from Caltrans last Friday. There was four main points to their letter, and we provided that to the commission ahead of tonight's meeting. They reference a correcting, a reference to an appendix, so we note that. They did recommend, make a recommendation regarding ingress and egress. Actually, they were recommending to eliminate the access onto the frontage road, which is not what staff would like to see. Because we feel that would just push, that's just going to push the traffic to, more to the side streets, and we're not in favor of that. There was some concern by Caltrans with regard to when traffic counts were taken. There's new directives down from the state, so there was a period of time during the pandemic where you were kind of given some, I'll call it some flexibility when traffic counts were taken. However, the traffic counts for this project were actually taken during, in 2019, when we were looking at doing, updating our traffic model for the city and updating our, some of our impact fees. And so, the traffic data was actually pre-COVID. So, you capture traffic information, kind of, at, kind of, what the peak of what it would have been. And then, in point number four, Caltrans was looking for clarifying whether the traffic from the Harder Marketplace development is included in the demand model, and the answer is yes. So, we think that all of the Caltrans concerns are addressed and shouldn't present a hindrance on proceeding with the project. So, as you heard me say with the last project, we have to make findings in order to make a recommendation and make a decision on a project. Those come directly out of our zoning code, the municipal code, and those are listed here. And in your proposed resolution, you have proposed responses to each of those. So, you have to make findings for, you make findings for the general plan, make findings for the rezoning and the development plan. So, the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and to adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt a resolution approving the environmental assessment, adopting a mitigated negative declaration, subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation measures, approving the general plan amendment, development plan, and rezoning of the project of 7.84 acres, the Henson Farm Apartments. Now, we did, at the kind of, this afternoon, we got some additional information from the designer that we kind of plugged into our PowerPoint, and it's more of a, I'll call it a, kind of, a fly-through of the project. So, it's a little video. And Erin, could you see if you could start that for me? Okay, for the record, I need to enter into the record the comment that was made at the previous public hearing item. Bear with me, I need to read it into the record for this project. So, again, that came from Colin Wade. My name is Colin, I reside in the neighborhood where the Henson Farm Apartments are being proposed. Apartment complex would be a great addition to the neighborhood and would improve affordability and property values in the area. I also read about the affordable housing project at 428 North Walton and think is a wonderful idea also. It's not often we see these projects getting legs in Yuba City, and I hope that other residents of the area support the idea as much as I do. I hope to hear about a resolution soon. Thank you, Colin Wade. So, with that said, that would conclude my presentation. We do have the applicants are here to answer questions you may have about the project. I believe their design team is here as well as the traffic engineer, because you may have questions for him, and then Ben and I are here to also help. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, let's go for questions. Do we have any questions from, I'm going to start at this end. Go ahead, Carrie.
Go first. Yeah, Doug, could you address the issue of the development to the north of this particular project? My understanding is that's currently been subdivided into single-family dwellings. Is that not correct?
Yes, by the applicant.
Okay, I thought so. So, my question is, has the traffic study taken into consideration not only existing traffic levels in this project, but the impact of that project as well?
Yes, it would be, is required to.
Perfect, thank you.
Go ahead.
What is the size of these units? A one-bedroom, two-bedroom, is it a variety, or?
Most of the units are one- and two-bedroom. You know, I think the applicant give you some work, you know, more color on, you know, square footage, is that type of thing.
Okay, look, any more questions for Doug?
Doug, can you clarify the entrance and exit points again?
Well, as they say, a picture's worth a thousand words. So, we have the main entrance off of the frontage road, so that's entrance and exit. And then, the parking's located kind of on the backside, and then you would have secondary accesses, one on Hooper and the other one on El Margarita. And again, this is a, would be gated entrances.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Yeah, so, I have a question, Doug. At one point, there was laughter, and I missed it, and I think it had to do something with parking. Does anybody remember?
I missed it as well.
So, I just want to make sure I understand, because it must be something that's, that's an issue? So, what, or a potential, what was it that?
So, now, I'm not trying to replay a joke twice, right? However, when it came to, it was the discussion about the, on the parking slide here, we talked about the code requires 193 parking spaces, the applicant is proposing 223. But I noted that although it's not required as part of the project, as part of the road improvements and how you stripe the road and handle that part of it, that the city was looking at, the way the city was looking at doing the striping, it actually would allow for some extra parking along the frontage.
Okay, but the thing that was being laughed at isn't actually part of the project as it's proposed.
Well, they have to do the road improvements.
Yeah.
But if we wanted to say, no, on street parking, that could be part of...
That could be, yeah.
Part of the process as we move forward.
Yeah, that's, I just want to make sure I didn't miss...
Right.
Something, and I missed it, but now I caught it, so thank you.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I missed it as well.
I do too, go ahead.
Yeah, if I could add to that, there's been a lot of talk, and the developer engineer might add to that a little bit later, there's absolutely an option to not allow street frontage, uh, street parking along the front. What it is, though, to the east and the west, there's an existing curvy gutter there that's pretty wide, and as many of the residents know, it's a, it's a high-speed road. It's 40 miles an hour, we just had a speed survey done there, it's going about 43 miles per hour is the eighth percentile. And so, one of the options, instead of having it striped a big wide lane that they just zoom by, we thought maybe a better option, or I think a better option is, you put a nice six-foot striped bike lane, you neck the lane down to 10 feet, and then you allow for parking, should there be some sort of party or some sort of event that has some sort of overflow that they park there, people walk in, and what that really does is it makes what they call road diet, and then people slow down when they go by it. Visually, maybe it's not quite as attractive when you're driving down, and so, we get the road, and we honestly debated this with staff as to what would be a better project, and so, that's definitely in the planning commission's discretion or if there's input from the public about it.
Okay. Go ahead, Stacy.
A question I have is, if this project was to get denied by either us or city council, does the applicant have the ability to come back at a later point in time with, say, an affordable housing element, and then the city's hands would kind of be tied on stopping that?
So, over the, there we go, try it again. So, over the last several years, the legislature has, I like to say, trying to justify their jobs, passes a lot of bills. And there've been a lot of housing bills in recent years, and some of the more recent ones that I think that came through last year was that if you have commercially designated property, that you have, if you meet certain requirements, there's always strings attached when the state's involved, that you can develop an affordable housing project on a commercial or office-designated property. So, to directly answer your question, if this project didn't happen, and if somebody wanted to develop that property as affordable housing, there certainly is that option, and in a lot of ways, the city's hands are tied.
And I guess, and that also applies to, again, you could have a strip mall there because it's already zone commercial, right? Right now, it's...
Well, it's a general plan designated for offices.
For offices.
For offices. I think one of the challenges is coming out of the pandemic, there's not a big demand for office space.
That's what I'm saying, so, right now, that's what it's zoned for, and that's what you're asking, right?
General plan has that designated for office and office parking.
Office, okay. Go ahead, Carrie.
I have one last question regarding the ingress and egress. From a fire protection perspective, has the fire department signed off on the ingress and egress on these, especially being gated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They're a part of the, so, just so everyone knows, when we get an application in, we will get that in within a few days. We're sending it out to city departments, both internal departments and other agencies to get a look at. Fire department, yes, is all over stuff.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, are we ready for public? Okay, let's open it up for public comment, and as I said before, we have a three-minute rule, and I know there's a few that you wanted to group together on your comments, so, let's just get started. And state your name and your address, please. is the metric that's the most important, according to SEQA guidelines, okay? And the other, the other metric that we want to look at is loss of service. And between both of those two metrics, okay, they have been ignored in certain circumstances where it just might not look too good for the traffic study, for the city staff to approve the resolution. And I, I think that that's wrong. I, I think that the level of service, for example, George Washington and Highway 20 is, according to the state, it's E or F. According to the city staff, it's a D. Well, you know, that, that's kind of Sesame Seed method of doing things, okay? Or Sesame Street, I'm sorry. But, but the point is, level D is ridiculous. Is that the kind of acceptance that we're going to accept in all these other presentations to the planning commission? If, if D is good enough, you know, fine. I don't think it is, and I don't think it should be. I do not believe that the environmental impact report concerning the traffic study was done, and I certainly don't think the mitigation issues to, to fix this thing, or to fix these, these issues have really been addressed, according to the city only, okay? There, there is no way to improve the current city streets, Jefferson, yeah, there is Jefferson, Jefferson's going through. Is my time up?
I'm afraid it is, Mr. Perry, but I got your, we got your drift.
We give this guy 40 minutes, and we give three.
Would you
All right, I'm going to be short and to the point. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Mary Page. I live at 1318 Ruth Avenue in Uva City. I've been there almost 30 years. I am not in favor of this, and I invite all of you to come to our neighborhood, which is turning into a sandwich community, not a livable community. We have the Harder Parkway going in, which is giving us probably, you know, 150 homes, and people need places to live, I agree with you. But at the same time, looking at this project, which is giving us probably another 400, when you look at multiple people living in homes, you've got close to 900 people. On Ruth Avenue, I have to move over to one side to let a car come through. I don't even have sidewalks. I'm looking at 10 new homes. These apartments will greatly, greatly impact our neighborhood. Apartments are so important, I'm wondering why they didn't happen at the Boat Project, the Lincoln Project, the Bu Vista Project, or the Harder Pacific Project. And as you've heard, I don't want to duplicate what people are saying. That was a great presentation. It did remind me a lot of college, living in Chico State area, which I don't really think any of us really want. And finally, I ask you really to stop slapping new neighborhoods together. Take the time to put actual neighborhoods together. If you want apartments, put them together. Stabler Lane has apartments put together. I'm not sure why it took 20 years for Uva City to get more apartments. That's a whole nother issue. But I really do think you need to take the time to plan. I know Governor Newsom's putting pressure on cities, so find that lot to put this beautiful complex on, and make our community be an actual community of living in homes. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. Okay, come on, you don't have to clap every time. We hear you, we hear you. Okay, next. Sir, if you want to go stand up in line, and you'll be right after this, what, and your name?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Beely, and I'm not going to give my full address, because I am in law enforcement, but I am on Bryn Mawr.
Okay.
And just to point out a couple of things, I like the fact that she said, I would invite you to come to our neighborhoods, okay? We're all on Bryn Mawr, just under a half an acre lot, and we have a great community, and the last thing we want is to be congested. And part of that congestion, I have concerns about the parking there. Think about, I am a family household of two. I have four vehicles. So don't be naive to think that you have 1.5 parking spots for this complex per unit, because everybody's going to have a trailer, an RV, a truck, a car, and whatever else. And then you're going to talk about multifamilies living in one unit. I have a nephew that lives in the Bridge Street Commons. He has to park at my house sometimes, because there's not enough parking spots. So don't be naive to think that there's enough parking there. And then to park on the side of the street, let me tell you, traffic is at 40 miles an hour. Try and come out off of Ruth, El Margarita, Bryn Mawr, any of those, and come onto Calusa. Those cars are coming fast, and you, you can't see because there's a tree on the side of the road, and so you have to inch your way out there and take a chance. You are asking for accidents, and then you're going to increase walkers. I have been in this house for seven years. When I first moved there, hardly any people walk in the streets. The unhoused are multiplying there. The criminal activity, our neighbor was broken into at 211, the crime is increasing because of the unhoused walking through our neighborhoods. We do not want to congest that, or even increase the liability of people walking from the apartment complex to Walmart on that street. They're going to get hurt, and that is going to be at the risk and the liability of the city. The other thing is, I am on the backside, my backyard backsides to those apartments. I will tell you, those eight apartments, which is two strip buildings with four units that are a one-bedroom, if that, maybe a studio, the noise in my backyard is much more considerable than anybody else on my street because of those eight units that are in my backyard. So be mindful of that. This, the noise will increase by traffic, et cetera, et cetera. So I just, again, encourage you guys to visit our neighborhood. This is not your neighborhood, or you wouldn't be wanting this. So come and visit us and see what's going on.
Okay, next. Okay, remember, we, we hear your comments, we hear about the, you don't have to keep going over and over about the traffic. I just want to remind you, but I thought your comments were amazing. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Anna Villagrana.
I'm not dismissing your passion at all.
Good afternoon, my name is Anna Villagrana on 1364 El Margarita. I just wanted to bring up two things. I think the presentation's wonderful, the project's wonderful, however, I don't think that we've made the planning complete. We've left off the people. And the people of this community have either invested for a number of years, paying their mortgages for, you know, 30 on so on years consistently, when the economy's turned bad, when it's turned upside down, when they could have short-sailed their house, and they decided to stay, because they live and thrive in small, low-density communities. So I would like you to acknowledge that. And also, for the new generation of buyers, they've chosen to pay and sacrifice and make those higher payments so that they could live in this type of neighborhood also. So dismissing that in the presentation, I think, is an oversight. In addition, the new people that would become, 138 families, you know, the presenter talked about the missing, the middle housing for the workforce. Well, it's great to have new housing for middle workforce, and it's missing, yes. However, do we have the current infrastructure? Have you seen these kids walk to school, the ones that do, the very few that do? They have to take the dirt road and check, go in, and the drivers are driving, trying to get out and into the community. And these kids are walking on pavement, on the roads, on the dirt roads. There is no sidewalk. There, some of them have like ditches for drainage still. There is no way to get to Bu Vista Elementary School for those students in this new area. Also, we've seen an increase of people, or children, crossing the freeway over the fence to get to the River Valley High School. That will increase. We need a pedestrian bridge. We need something to help these kids to get to school. There are no buses. Since COVID, there are no buses from our area over to El Margarita in River Valley. In addition, there is no public transportation in that area. In addition, have we thought about the increase in need for our emergency services, police, fire? We know with 138 units, there's going to be an increase to those needs. So I ask you to please deny this rezoning project, and at least until we can take into consideration everything we need to be able to service these new community members and the ones that are existing. Thank you.
Thank you. And who's, who's next? Next? He's waited long enough.
Just a 1101 El Margarita Road, just at the north edge and across the street from this development. The intersection at George Washington is currently a dangerous intersection. It does not have good traffic flow. And if you put this thing in, all the traffic, or at least 90% of it, is going to avoid that and come down Harder Road and cause a congestion down there where you're building another bigger complex with more traffic. Plus, another question I've got here. I, I'm 93 years old, and I've got hearing aids, so I might not have caught everything that was being said. But did I understand that the original plan that started this construction, which has been going on for over a year, was shot down by the planning department, department?
Want to address that, Doug? Just a moment, we'll have him address that for you, because not all of us were here at that time.
Okay, so what was lacking on, on the previous application? Yes, the applicant submitted a general plan amendment and a rezoning. So basically, they were asking to change the colors on the map. They didn't have the detail with the, the design aspect that we have tonight. And so because of that lack of detail, that was a contributing factor of why the planning commission made its recommendation last December for denial of the project.
Okay.
But the, the construction was allowed to start and continue for a year?
So what happened was, the, as soon as the planning commission, soon after the planning commission recommended denial, the applicant took that to heart. And so they then withdrew their applications, so they would not proceed to the city council with a recommendation for denial. And then they finished getting their design materials together, and then submitted new applications this year for processing.
So there's, okay, I think
To clarify, though, no construction is taking place on this
No construction
Yeah, there's been no construction on this particular site.
Well, if a flub up like that had happened to Caltrans, where I retired after 36 years in engineering, someone would have got fired. Thank you.
Okay. All right, who do we have next? Go ahead and come on up to the mic. Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm, I'm Rob Deitch. I'm on Bryn Mawr also. I'm in 63, my wife is 60. Much of our neighborhood there is comprised of, I, I would say, homeowners to whom would occupy their homes. And we are of an age where we don't really expect to relocate and move again, I would say for the most part in our lives, because they're not low-end entry-level housing. We, we moved there because we kind of enjoy the fact that there are wide streets, got a nice area to walk. I mean, people with dogs, kids, young children, bicycles, basketball hoops in the, in the streets, which some areas don't allow. But that's sort of the beauty of where we are, and what we like to see preserved. I won't go over the safety factor and the traffic count, but I have to agree completely. There's no way, God's green earth, did you have enough, I guess, overflow of 30 traffic, 30 parking spots? That, that's ridiculous. There's going to be a, a parking issue. We, we can agree on that. I don't care, just common sense tells you that. I guess what I'd like to say is one other thing. I looked at a realtor, see if they could help me lend some light to this, some non-biased opinion. In this Q U O R A, you ask a question, and it gives you a general answer. And I, I asked a simple question. Is something non-compatible with an area in the best interest of the area? And it says, no, generally speaking, it decreases the value of the residential real estate based on non-compatibility of adding additional new influx of different types of real estate, such as apartment and high density. So I think property values are important, very important component to those of us whom live there. And if you're out walking your dog, or you've got the kid in a stroller and the dog, you kind of really don't want the young bucks living in the apartments come speeding by you. You kind of like the beauty of single-family, non-entry-level residential to come within your area of single-family residential living that's kind of not high-end, but it certainly is an entry-level, low-income type of components. Nothing against that. This is a gorgeous thing. I'm not saying these people didn't put great homework, and that's a great project. But being in my neighborhood and taking the factor of what I consider to be a less safe neighborhood, and it could decrease the value, I, I think that's the most important part. And I, I'll, I'll just end on, if I may review my notes for a minute. I think George Washington Impact are absolutely right. It's ridiculous if you're out there right now, the way it's all jury-rigged. It, it makes no sense. And if they can't have that addressed, there's no way you're going to handle the other traffic of the cars coming in. It won't be worse. And, and again, pedestrian safety, housing values. I think there's a reason we like our wide roads, a reason we like to live where we live, and we'd like to see that continue on in a representative manner.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, I know that guy, Mr. Recycle.
Don't tell any stories about me, Jack.
Reduce, reuse, recycle, yeah.
Paul Demerit, I will have lived on El Margarita 30 years next month, and raised my family there, and ram-rodded my 13 grandkids there quite often. It's been a good, it's been a good time. I have basically about four or five things to say real quick. One of them is this, and I think it's the most important thing I'm going to say tonight. How many of you knew about this proposed project before the last 48 hours? I'm going to say that again. I want the planning commission and everybody involved in the city to watch that again. How many of you knew about this project before 48 hours ago? Before 48 hours ago? Ted, I, I'm not, I'm not, I, before that, this, this paper arrived on your, your doorstep within the last 48 hours? So my point is this. Yesterday, I took $26 over at UPS and an hour and a half and delivered the information that was forwarded to me by Mr. Perry to everybody on El Margarita and In Somber and Serena Court, just because I felt like this, we deserved to at least have a chance to say, how come we didn't hear about this? Projects like this, and I want to thank this gentleman over here for his excellent presentation, and for the work that's gone into it, and the work, your work that's gone into it. But folks, you got to let people know, in all my research, the essence of good leadership is good communication, and this is what happens when that doesn't take place. So the, I, by the way, I also talked to a representative from the Hanson Ranch Homes today, and she was not aware, and was convinced that her brokers were not aware of this additional Traffic issues, they've been addressed, and there's a lot of them. The median speed on, for example, El Margarita is 35 to 40 miles an hour, it's zone 25, and a regular speed is 40 to 50 miles an hour, including school buses, mail delivery, package delivery, vendors and tradespeople. I'm also concerned that we need, we, we, there may be a project coming, and I'm concerned that if denied, something else could take this, the, the place of this project.
my family there and ramrod my 13 grandkids there quite often. It's been a good, it's been a good time. I have basically about four or five things to say real quick. One of them is this, and I think it's the most important thing I'm going to say tonight. How many of you knew about this proposed project before the last 48 hours? I'm going to say that again, I want the Planning Commission and everybody involved in the city to watch that again. How many of you knew about this project before 48 hours ago? Before 48 hours ago? Ted, I'm not, I'm not, before that, this, this paper arrived on your doorstep within the last 48 hours. So my point is this. Yesterday, I took $26 over at UPS and an hour and a half and delivered the information that was forwarded to me by Mr. Perry to everybody on El Margarita and in Sombra and Serena Court, just because I felt like this, we deserved to at least have a chance to say, how come we didn't hear about this? Projects like this, and I want to thank this gentleman over here for his excellent presentation and for the work that's gone into it and the work, your work that's gone into it. But folks, you gotta let people know, in all my research, the essence of good leadership is good communication. And this is what happens when that doesn't take place. So the, I, by the way, I also talked to a representative from the Henson Ranch Homes today, and she was not aware and was convinced that her brokers were not aware of this additional Traffic issues, they've been addressed, and there's a lot of them. The median speed on, for example, El Margarita is 35 to 40 miles an hour, it's shown 25. And a regular speed is 40 to 50 miles an hour, including school buses, mail delivery, package delivery, vendors and tradespeople. I'm also concerned that we need, we, there may be a project coming, and I'm concerned that if denied, something else could take this, the place of this project that we'd like even less. I think, I heard that definitely, that we need to really talk about this. So my recommendation and request is that this proposal is tabled until a community meeting can take place of the people on El Margarita, on Hooper, in the area around us, with all of the right people to have that conversation, and we can address some of the concerns along with these people that have done all this great research. I think if that can happen, we can find some good answers. And I want to thank you for that time.
Eric? Okay. Do we have, oh, go ahead, sir.
My name is Bill Buschman. I'm in 2425 Sarocourt, which is right off Brenmore. Been there for about 25 years. I have two main questions. I sense some distrust in the room. Am I, am I wrong there? How many of you were part of the Hillcrest Water to Yuba City Water deal? Okay? So all these new proposed homes are going to be using that same infrastructure that at one point was Hillcrest Water and is now Yuba City Water. Adding more stress to that infrastructure, are the old Hillcrest wells being used now? And will they be used for this?
No.
That's, and I don't know if there's anyone in the room who can answer that, but we need that answer.
Ben or, let me, give me a second. Ben or Doug?
I think the short answer is no.
Okay.
I don't know, Ben, do you want to add any other color on that?
Yeah, I would just emphasize that with the development, these are city standards, and so there will be new ductile iron, eight-inch water lines that are put in for fire flows, and then also sanitary sewer. So the sewer system will be extended on Hooper, along the road frontage, and on El Margarita, so it's connected into the city services with the design standards, so the roads are built with the sidewalks, et cetera. And so, yes, Hillcrest Water was originally in that turbine area, it was converted, but the infrastructure with this project is all new to city standard.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the, the new infrastructure for this project will be all new, but it's being fed by pipes that are connected to the system. And my question is, are the Hillcrest wells being used? The old Hillcrest wells that contain icicles?
No. So all Hillcrest wells have been destroyed or are offline and disconnected physically. And then the city, through its water distribution team, manages and maintains all lines. So even if there's an old Hillcrest line, it might have been undersized, or it was a different pipe type that was not a current city standard, the city is responsible for that and maintaining it, that it continues to flow.
Thank you very much. I feel much better about my water now. The other question I have is, and people have already brought up road improvements on the frontage road, and obviously, in front of the project, there'll be road improvements, but will they continue at least to George Washington and the stupid road? Everybody know what road I'm talking about? That's been 10 years of a planning faux pas.
Okay, we're going to have him walk back up. We're going to get your questions answered.
Yeah, so to the, to the east and west, there's some existing development, obviously, with the residential homes built with county standards. There is curb and gutter to the east and west. With this, this project is required to build its frontages, pay its impact fees that go in towards the city's coffers that we could use towards future ultimate improvements like at George Washington Boulevard. But this specific project is conditioned for its frontage, plus there is a small safety improvement regarding advanced beacon and maybe some extended laning, striping associated with George Washington. But the majority of the frontage, the majority of the work is all at the frontage of the property.
So the existing road from there to the east is still going to be narrow, no sidewalk, bumpy, in need of repair, with a lot more traffic on it? Think about that. Thank you.
Next?
My name is Kathy Becker, and I've lived on San Gimano for 16 years. I live in a quiet neighborhood. It's peaceful, it's right by Hooper Road. Mostly retired people live there. The idea that they are even proposing to put apartments right there on the frontage road is appalling to me. If they want to rezonate, why don't they rezonate and put homes along there, just like all the homes they're building right there? Those 96 homes, just extend them to the frontage road, so it'll match the rest of the frontage road all the way down. Those are all homes, until you get down to the business where the cardio is with it, the church, and faith Christian. It doesn't make sense to me. So I am against this apartment complex. I think if it's going to be rezoned, it should be homes, those nice luxury homes they're building. Also, it's going to increase traffic on Hooper, and I thank everyone for bringing that up, because my concern is the safety of the children walking to school. I've called the city many times. Hooper Road is a racetrack. They went and put new speed limit signs on Hooper Road when I called about six months ago. Well, the one down on that end has been tipped over because of the construction, so it's a racetrack again. I just think this is a very bad decision, and everybody's invested in their homes. This is, this entire area, it's all single-family homes. They can put that apartment complex somewhere else. Thank you.
So if you want to get lined up in the back, and then we can just keep rotating you through? Yeah? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening again. My name is Bijan. I live on Tres Picos, Kendall Court, quite a ways from, from the side of this project. First, I'd like to thank the person that put a note on the Cressley Peaks app about this development, and that's how I learned about it. I like this city. I've been a resident here for, since 1997, and I'm a registered civil engineer with majority of my work with traffic. What I would like to mention is the white elephant. It's been mentioned by a few people already. It's that little stop. You're on the frontage road, and you're trying to head towards Colusa. And then you need to make a left turn to get either on Colusa Highway or across the highway. There's a tiny little stop that takes only two cars. The problem is not the number of vehicles, well, it is, but not at the moment. You have developments on both sides, and you're going to keep increasing traffic. But the problem is the flow or the movement of traffic on that tiny little stop. And that causes a lot of problems. I have had to, I remember having, had to wait three light cycles to finally make a left turn and be able to cross the highway to the other side on George Washington Boulevard. So that's, that's what I would call the big elephant in the room, that it needs to be fixed before we do any other development there. I'd like to thank Mr. Libby and Mr. Moody. Somewhere in your presentation, you mentioned, hey, I don't know how they do it in Elk Grove or Sacramento, they do some obvious stuff. In the most respectful way and kind way, I'd like to ask you to please not compare us to Sacramento or Elk Grove as a reason that because it's been done there, it might be legitimate to do it here or take a lesson from them. The reason I'm not there is because I like the way we live here, and I don't want us to be compared with Sacramento area. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Okay.
Hello, good evening. My name is Garrett Roper. I'm on Ruth. So everybody's covered traffic and beat the dead horse on that one, but so at this point, the city, to get through that light, the elephant room, the city is basically willingly, or however you want to call it, everybody has to break the law to get through that light. If you guys were to sit there, you'd have to get everybody a ticket every morning, because otherwise you're never going to get through there. All right, plain and simple. The city can't take care of the road as it is there. It's falling apart, potholes, been there for years already. All the big trucks coming to build the houses that now are making morals. The oleanders that the city can't cut are running the big trucks and all the cars. You want to build all this stuff, but we're not backing it up, we're not, we're not, dust control. I mean, I've worked all over the country, and we get shut down for dust control, little dust control. That shit looks like a tornado out there on the weekends. I don't know how they can get away with it with EPA. It's ridiculous as it is, and that's what you guys have already allowed, so why should we allow more? Pedestrians, kids can't go down the road. I'm a 43-year-old male, and I can't ride a bike or a skateboard or walk down that road. Good luck. Lots of luck to you. Makes them want to kill people out there. They want to run you over, 100 miles an hour, they already passed you on that road. Nothing, there's nobody out there to, to do nothing about it. So I don't know how you intend to make any of that even, it's a dream. It's not even, not even close. Okay, last thing, stormwater, okay? That was a womb orchard. The other development was a huge field. You got a huge industrial field that was all places that dissipate stormwater. They take all our stormwater. All of us, Brenmore, Ruth, we already, the city can't take our stormwater. We eat it. I pump it in my front yard, everybody else puts it wherever. And they tell us to stick it wherever, right? But you're going to build that in the place that was supposed to dissipate all the stormwater? No, no retention ponds, we don't have retention ponds for any development there. You're going to put all that water down Live Oak Canal that don't go where it can? Don't go down Live Oak Canal, how's it going to go? It dissipated in them fields, now you're taking all in the field? Okay, so where they want to put the parking for the, the extra drain parking along there is a 24-inch ditch that is supposed to take all that water all the way to Live Oak Canal through a series of 24-inch pipe in front of Dow Lewis, underground, and you're going to stuff all that water off them roofs and all them parking lots into that. I just don't ever see it possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Mitchell of Gray. Anyway, we've moved to Ruth Avenue and 1081 Ruth Avenue, it's close to the road along close to the highway. And I bought the house from my wife 49 years ago, because she wanted that home, an old farm home, and it's like a brand-new home you'd never know it now. And she passed away five months ago. At 80 years old, I'm 83, and now I don't know what to do in my head, you know what I mean? And I want to sell the house and get the heck out of here. This helps me do it. I don't want to live here anymore if this happens. And I want to sell my house because, because that's going to script my cost for the home when I sell it. That's a fact. You know that's going to happen. 3,000, 3,200 square foot that we bought for $80,000, worth $100,000, $800,000. And I'm going to leave it? I don't want to. But if this happens, I'm gone. So if you even son enough to do it, I'm gone. Go, go visit my daughter and live in Texas. So I think this stinks badly. Thank you.
Thank you. How many more do we, oh, oh, go ahead. And Linda, and, does anybody else wants to speak? Maybe, okay, go ahead.
Ruined everybody's mood tonight, I'm sorry.
No, no, this is good.
I'm actually happy that a lot of people are showing up today, or, you know, all of this stuff is online, so you can see, the council did a great job last time when this was presented, because they didn't have any of this information, and so without knowing that, they basically sent it back saying, could you please, if you want to have this, then you need to come back with some more information. And I think that people here need a little bit more information that the city can't tell you, but I can. So the first thing is, is that development is coming, we can structure it the way we want to, but there are laws and rules, and we can pick and choose only so much. So the first thing is, is that the people that own the property have a right, and they have the right within the rules to develop what they want to. So currently, the master plan and the zoning says that it's office space. You can't just change that. So it takes millions of dollars for you to change a master plan. They're not going to change that for this little, this little slot of land. Current rules say that it's office space that can go up to 52 feet. So if the, if the person who wants to develop this, and if, say, for example, they were able to say no to this project today, then the person can come back and say they want affordable housing, whatever else that's available within the rules, and then at some point, they're not going to be able to say no. Why? Because as, fortunately, Doug Libby, who does a great job, he can't tell you, and what some of the things that they were trying to tell you without specifically saying that, right? If the only thing that they can change from the office space would be to go to affordable housing, there's certain things they can say, yes, we'll go ahead and do that now, we'll do this, but they're not going to be able to go to low-density housing. We have too much low-density housing already in the general plan. They can't change that. So I live on Lincoln Road, out by Sanborn, so those of you that don't live or come down my way, it's where you go out with, with Lincoln and Bottlenecks right there. So I have one of those half-acre homes. Development was approved down the lane, and about four houses down from me, the plan is to put in a traffic light and double lanes on both of those things. Do I like it? No. Can I stop it? No. I'm not going to be able to stop that. And that's, it's a bit unfortunate, I understand, but at the same time, this development here, I think people, there's a misunderstanding. If you think that we can afford, like a single person with a one-bedroom home that can afford enough, has so much money that I can get an RV too, I mean, they're saying market rate. What they're, what they won't tell you is, they're going to be able to get the highest rate available for these apartments. It's a brand-new apartment complex. They'll be able to charge a huge amount for that. So please keep that in mind when you're talking about this.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Baker.
Hi, I'm Linda Baker. I've been a resident of Kimberly Drive for 39 years, and one, one thing I have not heard addressed tonight is evacuation plans. I have been forced to evacuate from my home twice while I lived there, one time with three school-age kids and a 14-year-old dog in my Honda. I, I'm a second house from the frontage road. I can't tell you how long it took me to get onto Colusa Highway from my house because of, because of the congestion. And back then, the frontage road ran all the way from Harder to Township. Now we've got the dog leg, and you're proposing a roundabout, I can't imagine that. We've interrupted the frontage road at Western Parkway, so that, that stops the egress in that direction. And it's, I mean, it's just continuously, the congestion for the possibility of evacuation has just increased, and we just keep dumping housing and people. Surely, there would be people in the Harder marketplace if, if there was an evacuation, how did they get out and which direction they're going? So I just really want to encourage you to think about evacuation plans when, when you introduce all of this additional housing into our area.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Layton? Okay, I've lived here too long, I know everybody in this audience.
Good evening. My name is Lloyd Layton. I live at 1212 Highland Avenue. I'm a Realtor, and I'm here on behalf of the Southern Yuba Association Realtors. And the first thing I'd like to point out to everyone is that California already leads the nation in homelessness. We have 70% more homeless people in California than New York State, which is second. We also have the second-highest home prices in the nation and the third-highest rents. That contributes to that problem. And we know why we have those highest home prices and rents. It's, it's because we have restrictive zoning codes, a torturous planning process, high government fees, and other government regulations. You can look at reports from the Federal Reserve Bank of You can look at reports from the Federal Reserve Bank of New York, California State Legislative Analyst. They all say the same thing. This particular project here is on land that was zoned commercial. That's been known for ages and ages. But what we're hearing tonight really is, I don't care about that. I don't care that they're using the property for something that is less dense than what it's zoned for. I'll just wait till they've spent all this money developing all these plans and I'll show up at a meeting and I'll say, gee, I, I'm all for affordable housing. I'm, I'm all for housing, just not this project. Well, homelessness is only gonna get worse. Somebody mentioned homeless people walking the streets. That's not gonna get any better if, if this project is denied. And this project actually first came up last December. Notices were sent out and only a few people showed up. And the reason we're here tonight is because the planning commission didn't bother to listen to the recommendations of staff at that time regarding traffic studies and, and regarding uh these renderings that you're seeing here tonight. At that point, it was just a zone change from uh, from commercial to um, to residential, to multifamily. And this is the kind of thing that, that creates the high housing costs that we have. They, they didn't do all these renderings at that point because they wanted to know whether or not they could even get the zone changed. What they've done now is they've gone out and spent, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to get here tonight. So now everyone can say, gee, we don't want multifamily here. Could've said that ten years ago when the property was being rezoned. So my recommendation to the city is, to, to you planning commissioners, is please just approve the project, uh, provided that it meets all the guidelines of the city. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Layton. Uh, any, oh, go ahead, sir.
Uh, my name's Deandre Obbs, um, new to the area where the proposed project is going. Um, as he spoke to, like you said, homelessness, uh, low-income housing, things like that. Um, I understand people fall in hard times, but I just purchased a home uh on the corner of Calusa Highway and El Margarita. I work seventy hours a week to be able to afford that for my family. You guys said that the, you know, three-story buildings have to be X amount of distance from residential. Uh, my house is right on the corner from that. I just spent over a half a million dollars to move, not knowing that this was uh gonna happen. So as would the rest of the people in this room, I'm not for it. Um, there's a lot of elderly people in the room that have lived here for a long time. They are still in this area for that reason, to live in a safe, quiet community. Uh, in my opinion, I think it's bullshit, so.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joe Hernandez. I'm at twenty-seven seventy-five Calusa Highway, right at the corner of Hooper and Calusa. Same concern as him, I honestly didn't know. I've been talking to both the brothers. Uh, I knew there was an apartment complex coming in, but at no point in time did I know that we're gonna be right at the corner of where I'm at, let me be a three-story one. Kind of feels a little invasive, don't have my privacy. I lived on twenty-four fifty-two Eureka Drive and I left that area because it just felt clustered. Just like everyone here, I wanted to share that dream of having my own little parcel, my own little compound, I call it. It's a great idea. I love the idea of the, of the new houses coming in. I love the idea of being able to put some money back into our infrastructure, into the road maintenance. And your worker's cut out because you have a lot of road that needs a lot of attention to. Um, and like we've been talking all night, the safety of our kids, us walking at night. It, it's definitely gonna be tested on, on this project. Um, just like everyone else here, I spent a little over half a million getting into this little lot, busting my butt. My wife, same thing. We commute to Sacramento. We work for Sacramento. But we left Sacramento because we love our community. I came to this community in nineteen eighty-seven against my will because I was eleven years old. My parents said, you're moving to Yuba City. But I, I love it here. I have raised my family here and I want to see them grow and enjoy these parcels that we have and enjoy this freedom that we have. Because that's honestly what it feels like, is freedom. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I, oh, are we good? Oh, one more. Oh, okay. Okay, now that's embarrassing. Where are you going? Okay. Oh, anybody else? Go ahead. No, no, I don't know, Mr. Perry. You can, go ahead.
Can I ask one question?
Uh, well, go to the mic.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
And sir, do you, if you want to speak, please go back there. Go on. We want to hear what you have to say. Go.
One, one question about the changing the general plan. Is it my understanding that we cannot change the general plan to R1? Period.
Doug, do you want to answer that one? You get paid for this.
So anyone can submit an application to amend the general plan and to rezone the property and it will go through a process. Comes before, you know, planning commission and council. Um, to directly answer the question, there's nothing that would prohibit somebody from coming in and asking to redesignate some commercial land to single-family residential if they wanted to. We'd have to look at that. Um, but you know, there's nothing uh that prohibits it. Now, there is a state law that prohibits the number of times annually you can change the general plan.
No, I'm sorry, Doug, what?
So state law limits changes to the general plan to four per year.
Oh, okay. You answered my question.
Got it? Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm one of those elderly people in the room. I have a house at eleven eighty Kimberly Drive and I've had it for forty-some years. Um, and two things. One is I heard, I thought I heard a comment just a minute ago that since this strip of land where the apartment complex is going was zoned commercial or office, that that cannot be changed?
The applicant is asking to change their office designation through a general plan amendment to go to R3, a multifamily designation.
Okay, and so can that, uh, is that uh etched in stone? So that cannot be changed to single-family residential?
So general plans are, are not supposed to be static. They are supposed to uh allow for changes over time. Um, so it allows for individuals to apply for general plan amendments. So could, could the applicant come in and say, yes, I would like a general plan amendment for low-density residential?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they, they could, but that's not what they asked for. Thank you.
But, but since they have, since they want to build this apartment complex on that strip of land, I seem to be under the understanding from previous comment that our attendance and our objection to that tonight doesn't mean squat.
No, that's not, that's not true. Ben, will you go up and answer that? It's a recommendation. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just um add a little bit to it. I think the comment came from Ms. Asman Winder and said, the city couldn't change it to low-density. That, yes, the city can change it. With, with the property owner wants to do a general plan amendment and they want to change it, as Doug processed, the city would look at that. Where it becomes complicated to go to R1 is the city has recently adopted a housing element that has mandates that requires how much, sets some, some baselines regarding how much um single-family and how much multifamily is expected. And so you start to get into this point where we're, we're short on multifamily, we're long on single-family. And so all of a sudden, if you're starting to swap out and you're putting more single-family in, you, you have to offset it. You really come into a problem where you, if you go, if you remove multifamily. But, but we are at that border, that borderline with the state as far as how much we can keep rezoning as, as single-family. But that is an option. And then I would just add that with this general plan, um, that was created in two thousand and four, a, a reason this was, was put in as commercial office at that time was the, the, the context that would provide a buffer. So single-family wasn't up against the highway. And so that's where it's this long strip and they didn't push the single-family all the way up to it, is my understanding. Um, historically is they put this buffer in and that's where um Steph feels, you know, where we see that this is being a fit for that location because you're up against the highway, it provides a buffer and provides a sound barrier against a single-family um along that high-speed area.
Well, I, if I'm still on the clock here. Uh, yeah. The comment I would make is that, as I mentioned, I've, I've had this house on Kimberly Drive for forty-some years. Um, I bought that house because it's, uh, we were out in the country at the time. Somebody mentioned it's wide streets, it's quiet, it's residential, uh, single-family residential. And um I guess in summation, having a, a multi-story apartment unit, people looking into backyards of, of the people who have been there for a long, long time, that invades our privacy. And I guess in summation, I would say that this is a wonderful project. Uh, obviously a lot of homework has been done. Uh, and it belongs in the community, doesn't belong in our neighborhood.
Go ahead, sir, we're gonna let him have thirty seconds. Hit that clock, thirty seconds. Forty, okay, forty.
Including walk time?
Forty-five, forty-five, fifty, fifty, fifty-five.
I would just like to address something that was said by the Realtor. I was born in Clinton, Oklahoma, June seventh, nineteen thirty, at the beginning of the Great Depression. And just when the Dust Bowl was driving my dad off the farm and into town. But he did move from the farm into town and found work and he kept us fed. People who are willing to work don't have to be homeless unless they're crippled. And the only reason homelessness is getting worse in California is because we feed them and pamper them. They need to make their own work.
Okay. All right. Can we, all right, so I'm gonna, all right, you, you keep getting up and down. You gotta go now. Okay, go on. We're gonna make you our last comment, okay? And then we're gonna get moving here.
My name's Gary Bell and I live on eleven twenty Brimar Drive. And the houses would be all right, but apartments, I, I think it's a bad idea because three-story apartments, they can, people can look into the backyards of the people that live on Brimar Drive. And, and, and I think apartments are, are not good, but the single housing would be all right. And, and everybody said about the traffic, it, it's a bottleneck. Get out of George Washington and then you've got uh, on Park Way, it's, it's, it's gotta be a mess and that's all there is to it. But that's all I got to say. The three-story, I think is a bad idea for that area.
Okay. Is, is, who, Doug? Developer is here, can we address that? Three stories down.
The applicant team is here and they're kind of waiting for the, the public comments to be finished.
Okay.
Then they will come up and like to address the commission.
All right, I think. I think we're done with public comment and now we will allow, oh.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Okay. Now, remember, you know my bedtime is seven-thirty.
I know, I know.
And you've pushed it, no. I appreciate you.
Just, and I'm asking this and so appreciate all that the commission has done, all these folks have done. Can you suggest a format where those of us that are concerned and yet open to what the, the information you're giving us perhaps we haven't heard before, Lloyd and others, can you suggest a forum where we could have a, a, a meeting and discuss those things and learn more and possibly come up with a, a plan B, C, D, or E?
Probably not tonight, but I'm not sure how we have to vote at a point.
Yes, someone, I would just note that, you know, the commission is making a recommendation. There's a period of time between the planning commission and when it goes to city council that gives the citizens time to meet if they wish, come up with recommendations and then uh they could approach the, the city council.
Yeah, that, that's the one thing I wanted to make clear. We, we yay or nay are just making a recommendation. That's it. It goes to the city council, they override anything we say. But that's part of our buffer system here and, and again, being part of a planning commission. Um, so did, was there, was that the last comment? Can I close the public? I'm doing it, one. No, what?
Don't we have to hear from the applicant?
We're going to after, do I want to leave that in open? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Carrie. All right, so we're gonna hear from the applicant. And please, everybody be nice. Play nice.
Hello, all. My name's uh, Maydi Pabla, applicant for this project. I thought this was gonna be a slam dunk, there's not a lot of people here. I'm dressed quite opposite. Um, to address some comments, the one was the corner three-story buildings. Uh, we are deciding to put discussion here. You know, there's stuff like that wasn't taken into consideration.
Could you talk in the mic? I'm sorry, we can't.
Is your mic on?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, we can take some uh recommendations, like we can cut down those three stories to two stories. You know, there's stuff that we can, modifications we can make. It's not like this is a lock-in layout, design, et cetera. Um, one comment I do want to kind of talk to is someone was saying four hundred units, this is a hundred thirty-eight units. I don't know where that discrepancy was coming in. Single-family homes is ninety-six single-family homes and then the front portion is a hundred thirty-eight apartment units. Um, as someone was saying up here about, you know, what are option B, option C, et cetera. The reason why we decided to go with multifamily was because at that time, it was in our mind, based on our analysis, our numbers, market research, et cetera, it was the highest and best use. And now considering, you know, this property is zoned office, we could put a fifty-two-foot office building. Would you guys like that? That's for you guys to decide, right? But again, by right, we can do that and planning commission can approve it and move on to city council, et cetera. Next option would be, we can do affordable housing. Per California, somebody built two thousand and eleven, it was passed last year. It gives developers the right to build affordable housing on retail and office properties, zoned properties with a ninety-day turnaround approval rating. Ninety-day turnaround on approval. So that's an option here. So my question to, you know, residents, local residents sitting here today is, what would you prefer? Would you prefer market rate? Something that's gonna look like this, is gonna be a standout, beautiful item on the freeway? Or would you prefer something like two hundred and sixty-three affordable housing units? That is not gonna quite look like this. So, you know, I'll let you guys decide that.
Are you giving us an option?
So my, my question is.
Okay, that, come on, you guys, let's be respectful, let him speak, please.
So that's all my comments that I have at this time. If you guys have any comments in particular, I can address those.
So you, I, no, I appreciate that. I think we're good. Um, anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Oh, go ahead.
If this is approved, uh, what is your turnaround time? When do you look to start construction?
Developing on this one, Mr.?
Yeah, and then my, my reason for asking is, you know, we're gonna be thrown to the wolves on this if we uh vote yes. And we've had projects like this come before us before and four years down the road, you got an applicant asking for an extension and another four years asking for another extension.
So, thank you for that. That was one item I actually did want to talk about. So right now, we're uh focused on the single-family homes that we've started construction on, as you guys probably saw. And we have a self-storage development right down Calusa, uh, on Highway twenty as well that we're building. So our goal in this project is to build this in the next five years. And you have our word on that, that it will happen if this gets approved.
Okay. All right, um, wait a minute. Uh, Sean, did you want to say something? Thank you, sir.
I'm Sean Menard with MHM Engineering, twelve oh four East Street, Marysville. I'm the civil engineer on the project and I just. I'm the civil engineer on the project, and I just wanted to go over a couple items that were brought during the uh, the presentation and some of the speakers. My my job is to make a project work from an aspect of sewer water and the roads. And um, one of the comments that was brought up about the storm drainage, and I know about the, you know, the s- the drainage system for the old subdivisions, we're not using that. We happen to be the designers for the subdivision called the Sienna Estates, the Hooper project, and then the Henson Ranch also. But as part of the Sienna project, we put a new storm drain pipe up Hooper, then down Monroe, and dubbed into the Livo Canal. So, it's not gonna be tied into the same system. Actually.
Still in the Livo Canal, always get over per.
Hold on, hold on, please. Thank you.
And so, actually, we will, we're connected in their system, so it'll actually allow some of their water to go into this system, so it'll actually provide additional drainage opportunities for the existing system. So, I just wanted to clarify that. There is a storm drain system, it was designed for this entire area, there was a service area, and that was done with the Sienna Estates project many years ago. Street parking, um, the main thing is, we we we, it's not gonna be the same road width, obviously. It's gonna be widened to accommodate, you know, Ben mentioned a ten-foot lane, but right now, it's laid out, it's a eleven-foot lane, a bike, bike lane, and a, and parking. So, it'll be twenty-two feet of asphalt on that half of the road. So, it'll be much, it'll be about double the width in asphalt, what it currently is. So, it'll be a wider road. We understand the traffic issues, so um, so that that's what the road section is, and I provided Doug a cross-section, so if you wanted to see what's somewhat proposed, um, that's that's available if you want to see that. Something else that came up, numerous people talk about the George Washington intersection. I I I know that's an issue, it's been an issue for years. Um, I also happen to be the designer on a project, Western Parkway, all those subdivisions over there, I was the designer on those. And as part of that project, when Western Parkway was completed, Royal Ranch Arrow was supposed to be blocked. Where, you know where that church is? It was supposed to be a knuckle placed in there and force all the traffic on Royal Ranch Arrow over to Western Parkway. That was not done because of public outreach. People in that neighborhood didn't want to go over to Western Parkway, they still wanted to go to George Washington. So, that adds that traffic when it should be going to Western Parkway. So, that was a decision made by the city years ago to allow that traffic to continue to George Washington. That's that's part of the solution now, is those traffic studies that show blocking that and putting a knuckle right at the church and forcing it down. I think it's Libby Lane, isn't it? But uh, forcing it over to uh, to Western Parkway is the, is part of the solution. Uh, I'm not gonna say it's the only solution, but there is that queuing issue, but that's, that eliminate a lot of the traffic. So, if there's any other questions, I can answer on the technical side, you know, the rope, water, sewer, and all that, I can answer that. If not, that's.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
All right.
Okay, so, you have any questions? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna give you one more, one more shot, go ahead, and then we're gonna close the public hearing. No, I didn't. No, no, I got one left to go, I've already just gotten ready for the public comment. Okay.
I would just like to clarify.
I got two minutes, you guys.
I would get the developer's name, but it's unfortunate that um, he's just pinned us to an ultimatum. And um, and I understand that your wealth is way more than what we can all imagine and that when he talks, and I'm not insulting you because that's what it is. And and I know her statement was to accept this or do the um, lower-end housing, and of course, I would accept this over the lower-end housing any day, um, and so that is something to be thought of. I just, as community members, hard-working citizens that are here of this, of Uba City, to be given an ultimatum and be threatened with the low-income housing option is a little bit insulting, and maybe not disrespectful, but a little bit insulting, and I just want that to be said.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna do one more, and then I'm closing the public comment. It's time for you to hear from us, too, so just go ahead, sir.
My name's Paulie Di Bartolo, I'm the lead designer with DBRDS on the project. So, I wanted to speak a little bit, it hasn't really been a question of the design tonight, but I think that an awful lot of thought has gone into what was proposed here from the development team, and I think what Mandi was trying to say that uh, with with kind of expressing the alternatives that can happen on this property is that, you know, we can come in today and do a very large-scale building on the property. That's what the current zoning allows. And I can tell you, we work all across the state and all different municipalities, there are senate bills and assembly bills that allow developers to manipulate the systems and squeeze in as much housing with as little parking as possible, and it's happening all across the state. What was refreshing for us was the conversation early with Mandi and the development team of, we want to be sensitive here, we're developing single-family housing on the rear of this, we want to upscale that, we want to provide missile, missing middle housing, which is kind of my generation, people that can't afford to buy in yet to a six, seven, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar property, as I heard earlier, because properties aren't being sold for eighty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars anymore. That's what this project is doing. And these guys intentionally challenged us with providing a smaller scale, not maximizing it, not underparking it, wanted to provide a reasonable, fantastic amenity of a multifamily apartment project that the average person could afford and come into this community to get their start in Uba City. And I thought it was a very, I know it sounded like an ultimatum, I think what he was saying was, this is what the current code allows, and we wanted to have a more sensitive approach to that. So, just a little bit of explanation on that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, I am closing the public comment. We're done, we're done, but come on, sir, we'll be here all night. I, oh, okay.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. My name's Scott Robbins, I was born here. My brother and sister went to high school here. I'm one of the co-applicants. We're not trying to strong-arm anybody. We're developers, we bought the property, we are building some beautiful homes behind it. We're left with this piece of property that's zoned for office, don't think anybody in here wants to see office space there. It's gonna generate more traffic. We're not here to try to strong-arm anybody, but we're also not gonna just sit there with the property left open. We have to do something with that property. So, this was our best option, and I understand you don't like it, we've been getting our butts kicked here all night. Not one person stood up and said anything except for this gentleman here, who had the best comment of the night. And it was for the wrong project, for the first project tonight, right? And so, everybody in here is to oppose this project. And I understand, but understand that we have to do something with this property, we can't just let the property sit there, we're not gonna just pay the city taxes on it, we're not gonna continue to mow it and cut the weeds down, we have to do something with it. So, currently, it's zoned for office, fifty-two-foot-tall office buildings. I don't think anybody in this room wants that. We don't want that. You don't?
All right, no, no, we're not gonna have conversations back and forth, sir, so I'm, I appreciate that.
At the end of the day, we're trying to find the best way to maximize this property and make it the best that we can for the community. We feel like this project does that versus all the other alternatives that are there for us.
All right, thank you.
We're not here to strong-arm anybody.
All right, thank you. All right, we are now closing the public.
Make the property a golf course.
Oh, you can buy Peachtree, it's up for sale. No, no, it's not really, I'm sorry. I'd like my husband to give up his membership. Okay, let's get moving on. All right, so we've closed the public comment, now this is the point where you get to hear from us. Good or bad or ugly, so no yelling, no screaming, no booing from you. I'm teasing you. Yeah, the passion, that's where I was going with the passion. Jimmy, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I have one question for the developer or the the designer. A few times, it's been brought up about parking concerns. I just want to see if we could kind of clarify that. Part, uh, apartment complexes I've been in, or condominium complexes, often there'll be uh, numbers assigned to slips, you know, so I can't have seven vehicles. Is that part of the plan as far as the design, that each unit is only allotted a certain spot?
Yes, that's correct. Every unit will have its own designated parking space. That's why we also have guest parking as well, too. But to answer your question, yes, each unit will have its own designated parking space.
Okay, thank you.
That it?
I, and then one other, there was concern that the public wasn't um, given proper notice. I just want to ask the city if the same process was followed for this as previous applicants?
Yeah, thank you for giving us the opportunity to respond to that. So, yeah, for for any project, um, this project was noticed in both the newspaper as well as mailed notice. State law requires a minimum of three-hundred-foot notice around the exterior boundaries of the property. So, it doesn't mean people beyond that are not uh, welcome to participate, it's just that the legal requirement is a three-hundred-foot notification boundary. And yes, that actually did happen. It, uh, notice was sent out, would have been thirty days before the public hearing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, that's it. Ruby?
I'm gonna go this way. Um, it was mentioned, the intersection that everybody has a concern with, I'm quite familiar with that intersection myself. Is there any future plan to um, put some type of a barrier from the traffic coming from the other side, or is there any future um, uh, plan to modify it so that it can accommodate more traffic?
So, to add to that, um, yes, and so the city just recently did a traffic model update, and we're looking at our traffic impact fees, and as part of that, staff is recommending that the the traffic impact fee, every time a house, a a home, a development occurs in Uba City, um, the, a property paid is into that impact fee. And so, there's um, part of that is a cul-de-sac at Royal Ranch Arrow to um, help alleviate that. Um, there's discussions um, uh, as far as what the trigger is. Um, as as mentioned by the engineer in the past, after the um, public um, workshop in the past about closing Royal Ranch Arrow, it was decided, um, if people want that opening, even though it's delayed and they wait, they'd rather have it open and delay and wait. And so, it it was left open, and and the thought is that if they delay and wait long enough, they'll turn and go west to Western Parkway and come down. Um, there's definitely um, an option with the planning commission, if if they want that to be um, with this project, that the city council have direct staff to look into a consideration, that when it gets to a certain level of service, that they they a- again, look at closing that off, um, that is at your purview. But right now, yes, there's money planned to be collected for a cul-de-sac at Royal Ranch Arrow Drive that would ultimately um, move some of that traffic off that intersection. And, yeah, I mean, there are improvements happening to the east with the, um, as Doug described, that that road is right now to the east, it's taken a while, but it's under construction that will be at a city standard width with curbs, gutters, and a better access onto Harder Parkway. So, anybody going east, it's now approved. And so, it's a, that leg of that i- is a better option.
So, Ben, are you saying that you're hoping that most of the traffic will utilize the east side, rather than uh, go through the uh, George Washington area?
More people means more traffic. But um, city staff doesn't recommend a moratorium on all growth north of Highway 20. And so, with that, yes, we know that there will be more traffic at certain periods of the of the day. And so, that peak hour, yes, maybe if you hit it right at 7:30, it's not gonna be two seconds, it's gonna be three cycles. And so, people will then have to decide if they're gonna go north, um, go east and and round the corner, but um, the majority of the time, it's it's operating at this level of service that's been acceptable by the city. And at that, at some point in time, cumulatively, as there's growth occurs north of 20, so everything in Royal Ranch Arrow, everything farther north of of the railroad tracks as development occurs, the city's gonna have to look at that and figure out when they're gonna shut, shut off Royal Ranch Arrow.
Thank you.
Okay. Ma'am? Nothing? Okay, um, but, well, let's go ahead, go ahead, and then I'll just be the last about that.
Just want some clarification on, uh, there were some statements made that people are being threatened with potential other projects. Nobody's making any threats, we're just trying to make you fully aware of what the developer's rights are and what could happen if this is told no.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, one thing I wanted to clarify, too, it might be for Ben or for Doug, but there's a general plan amendment that allows a certain amount of single-family to multifamily residents in the city, and there's also actually a state regulation, I believe, and we're on the border of where we got too much single-family and not enough multifamily. Is that correct? Yeah.
Oh, okay. Carrie?
Yeah, uh, just a couple of comments. And I get the angst and anxiety uh, about growth and development in a, in a, in a part of town that used to be farmland and small farmhouses, and and you want to maintain that, but I also stand, understand the need for growth and managed growth. Being a father of 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 three kids and watching them grow up and struggle, and especially after the Paradise Fire, when there was no available rental units, um, and watching them struggle to find a place where they could afford to live and not have to live with two or three or four roommates, um, is something I'm passionate about. And it's always interesting to hear how the the community's in favor of multifamily or affordable housing, just not in my neighborhood. Um, and when I was going through uh, college to get my degree on the state land use affairs, we had a term for that, it was called NIMBY, not in my backyarders. I understand that perspective, but I also understand the need for growth and for it to be managed and controlled. That's one of the reasons why the commission sent this back to staff to ask them to bro- is my?
Hmm?
Okay.
Okay.
To give us a project we could look at without approving something sight unseen, much like we did with the Habitat for Humanity project. So, with that being said, I also want to address a couple of comments that were made about traffic. Uh, staff in their traffic report clearly identified that developing this at an office build-out will generate a thousand nineteen trips per day as opposed to nine-hundred-and-something for this project. Um, there's also some concern about the three-story portion of this project. I want to point out that that is put on the front of this, that fronts on the Frontage Road facing the highway with more than two-hundred feet in any direction, correct me if I'm wrong, to any single-family residence. So, the concern about um, eyesight into your yard, your front yard, your backyard, I I I think is overstated and maybe not founded on on what reality will be. So, I personally don't see a need to modify this project to pull out that third floor. The last comment I'd like to make, and there's been concern about property values, and believe me, as a homeowner, I I I, that's something I am, I'm well aware of. But please keep in mind that this developer's also developing a single-family subdivision next to this, and so there has to have been some consideration given to them, they're obviously quite adept at doing market studies and research and making projects pencil. So, I think that should give you some some confidence in the product they're gonna build to protect the value of the single-family subdivision that they're building. And with that said, that's all I have.
Okay. Um, I guess mine's a more, a little bit more personal, I have lived here pretty much all my life. I um, a a little bit, I talk about passion, I, you know, I've lived on Cherry Street for, off of Walton for thirty-eight years, and yeah, I was a, there was country, there was nothing there. And just recently, you know, we're we're approving all down going on the south behind me, believe me, there is a lot going on. There were times I couldn't even get out on Walton to go to the left to get my son to AK school. So, I understand every bit of that. In fact, the Merrimet project, I was surprised everybody wasn't up and talking about the traffic, because, you know, again, that to me is much more a disaster, but yet, it's a project that we have to have. We, I can share with you, I work heavily with Bill Air Force Base, there's seven thousand employees out there. Yes, they're going to Lincoln because there's nothing here for them, they can't afford to live here. This is possibly a solution for some Bill Airmen to actually live there with their families. I think that, I, that's where I think the planning commission has to look at, it's not, we get it, I don't want it in my backyard, you know, and one of the reasons why I'm a planning commissioner is because I did, I fought with Ben on getting a stoplight, and I'm gonna finally get one, and, you know, it just, it's just the process that we have to go through, but it can't just be for that. Uh, Mr. Demerit, I agree a hundred percent. I, you know, I I don't think we can make that decision tonight, but I do think that I I feel with a developer that he, they are open to have these conversations, I, but yet, I feel the same way. That is their property, they're building those homes, that's gonna be, you know, I don't want an eyesore there, I think this is gonna be a beautiful project, it is not affordable housing, low income, this is going to be that working poor that we all talk about. It's not the homeless, it's the working poor. And I'm telling you, that is Bill Air Force Base, that's the waitress that works over at Dancing Tomato. They cannot afford to live anywhere. So, this to me is, I will tell you, I, I was absolutely, I get it on the traffic. And I, I even called and I said, you know, I just don't know if I can do this with my heart, but the more I saw the project, I see your passion, but I also see that we can work together and figure this out because that's what, I think that lot is going to be much better than what our alternatives are. And I, and I think that's exactly what he was trying to say. I would prefer to have a working-class apartments there that are beautiful on the inside and the outside for those people than our alternative. I don't, that, so that's where my heart is. And on that, are we ready for a vote?
I think a motion.
Or a motion? Okay, anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution recommending the city council of Uba City, the city of Uba City adopt a resolution approving environmental assessment EA 23-02 by adopting a mitigated negative declaration subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation measures and approve general plan amendment GPA 23-01 and development plan DP 2301, Henson Farms Apartments for 138-unit apartment complex and adopt ordinance approving rezone RZ 2301 on seven, eight, 7.84 acres located on the north side of North Collosa Frontage Road between Hooper Road and El Margarita Road. Assessors possible numbers 62-08-019-020 and 021.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nor?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandu?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Burson Brookman?
Yes.
Sheriff Burson Silman?
Yes.
And remember, you can, again, you can appeal it to the city council, but please, let's try to work with the developer. I know that didn't, that went on deaf ears, but...
Thank you, thank you so much.
I thought, I thought it was going to be about 50/50, like I told you. That traffic, that, that on Walton is 100 times worse than anything that's going to happen.
I, I guess we'll take a break. Okay, we're going to continue on the agenda? Yeah, I'm sorry, we're not done, but we are going to, we are going to table our wonderful Ashley's presentation until next time because she knows mama's tired. Um, no, but is that okay? Okay. So, uh, any future agenda items? Mr. Libby?
Yes, we're going to have, uh, four items for you next month.
Ew, no. I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
Not nearly, probably not nearly as exciting as this month.
All right. This is a good one.
So, we're going to have, um, the Sohal subdivision that's located, uh, southeast corner of Lincoln and South George Washington. It's a subdivision map in the old Lincoln, the specific planning area, 171 single-family residences coming forward. Uh, we will have a, um, pro, small project over on corner of, um, Butte House and what's the Cross Street? It's this 1879 Butte House, I think it's on the corner of Elmer. And this small piece are proposing to do a general plan amendment rezoning to multifamily, uh, on that corner, the northeast corner. And then, we have a small parcel map over at, uh, 2930 Jefferson Avenue. That'll be coming for you. So, and the other item was a, a small time extension coming forward, so.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. You did a great job tonight and, uh, you know, you don't always get these and then you, we have a newer planning commission, so everyone did a great job.
Oh, I'm, I'm just over the moon with everybody. Um, Mr. Moody, provide updates. Much more can you add to that?
Um, okay, I'll make it quick. Nothing like, um, public service. Thank you. To make it quick, uh, now, uh, Ashley put together a great development newsletter. So, quarterly, we put a little update out, take a look at that when you get a chance. It kind of shows what's going on in the, in the city regarding the development services department. Um, just in there, Raising Cane and Dutch Brothers, they're pretty much almost done with their permit review, so I expect that to happen pretty quick, probably, um, probably in the winter. Um, what we're hearing is that they're going to finalize the map, they're going to record the map, um, November timeframe, and that's when the, the roads anticipate to be done for the signal and they're coming along the backside in that November, December timeline. And then you'll have the, the construction of a pad start immediately after that. Um, Harder South, final map, so the, the DR Horton's moving in there. And so, they're, they're going like gangbusters, they're also going to record that map in November and then you'll start seeing vertical construction, either, you know, depending on the weather. If it rains like last year, it might not be till spring, uh, summer, but it's soon thereafter. Um, Henson is building about five to six homes with the, the rest of them approved, so it's really just how fast they want to build out at this moment. And then, um, one little fun fact is the city signs. So, um, once in a while, you get some, um, social media about the welcome to Uba City signs, um, on 99 and then also on Highway 20 of Township. Um, yeah, so, we were awarded a $100,000 grant. And so, with that, um, we're coordinating a, um, RFP, so a request for proposals from local artists in coordination with the schools and the art council to come up with a design. And so, what we're going to have is, is, we're going to take an item to, to council to establish, um, the plan currently, and might modify it a little bit, to, uh, to have a review committee, um, but then coordinate that with the schools and the, and the local artists in order to come up with a, you know, basically, we have a $100,000 budget, come up with a design proposal, it's reviewed and approved by the, um, the council, and then we use the local schools to fabricate portions of it and then install. So, that's kicking off and that's going to be happening over the next month, this kickoff for the, for the proposal. So, that's just a little fun fact and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just have one. Were you as surprised as I was that the hoopla was about the Henson Farm and not the Merrimet?
You know, I thought I might see a little bit more mix.
Yeah, I was actually surprised, so.
For, you know, four stories, higher density.
Low income.
Single-family, um, backyards, um, I, I was, but I know. Terrebonne, I, you know, I'm a Sutter guy, so I...
I know. I wonder, I forgot that part. I was going to say, I drive that all the time.
I get it, nobody, um, nobody likes development and, but unfortunately, it's kind of like the Elmer area where the development is coming.
So, do you think my passion overload, you know, just kind of made them all come up here and say, "Thank you"? I mean, for the older, the 93-year-old, the 93-year-old shakes my hand, "We're going to, we're going to be okay, honey." Okay, now, I cannot ask for more than that.
I thought it was respectful.
I know it was very respectful.
You know, for the number of people here, I've seen them go, uh...
I know, thank you, officers, for being here, for sure. I felt really safe.
Same, that's for getting lynched.
I thought she was going to come and hit me, but that was okay. I had to, you know, going back and forth and joking, so, sorry.
Do either of these have on print bar?
No, but they'd like some affordable housing, yeah.
I want that $80,000 house.
I know it.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
Yeah, that hurt my feelings, for sure. Um, Carrie, do we have any updates for Sutter County?